Councilwoman Waltz made a motion. Councilwoman Diggs, second. All in favor. Unanimous. Motion passed. I want to announce, first of all, I'm very, very sorry that we're running so late. We had an executive session about a new business, and I apologize for all of us. I also want to announce that we're going to continue, anyone that's here for the May Royal subdivision, it's going to be, it's been continued and it's not on the agenda, so we just want to let you know. Welcome to the March 11th meeting of the Aiken City Council. If you are inclined, please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief Branca, will you come down and please, and forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I will review the guidelines for the meeting. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed, and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue, and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. I recognize Mayor Protem Edgerado for this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Glad you're here. Another beautiful day in Aiken. Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, so I present this as a motion.
Councilwoman Gerardo made the motion. Is there a second?
I second that, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll made a motion. Seconded. All in favor. It's unanimous. The motion's passed. The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion. We have second. Councilwoman Waltz seconded the motion. Any comments or changes? All in favor? We open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of thirty minutes. Mr. Ellis? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I hope everyone's doing all right tonight. Jacob Ellis, Three Short Court. The Project Pascalis properties were sent out for an RFQ that had that being returned to y'all.
It's on the agenda for tonight to select a firm to list the properties.
Okay. Do either of those firms, I've heard there are two, do either of those firms have historic preservation experience?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir in the front row?
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Frazier. I'm a minister in the local area. We had Rogers Rollins to send out some flyers, but we're having a prayer march on March the 30th. We want to ask everybody that's on the board, if you can, to march with us. It's a prayer. It's a Day of Repentance. The Lord is asking me to pray for Aiken, Aiken County, Aiken Schools, the school districts, the police officers, and city council and county council. So I have the other information that I don't know who to give it to. Okay. And if you could join us that day, we are praying and we're going to leave from, the parade is going to start at ten o'clock downtown Aiken, and we're going to march through Aiken because our ministry started off praying in each one of the communities, praying for unity in each community. So the Lord directed me to just have a march down through Aiken, and then we're going to end up at Beverly D Clyburn Generation Park and pray there all day for God to send His power down upon us and to heal our land. So I'm asking all the ones that name the name of Christ to come out and join us.
And what date is that?
March the 30th. And we're going to meet down, this is just a regular parade route, we're going to meet down in Giles Park in line, and we're trying to get all the school districts, the teachers, I'm asking even the bands to come and play "God Bless America" and "America the Beautiful", and let's pray and get God's Spirit in us before His judgment fall on us.
We can try, too. You said march.
We got the parade permit, we got a permit, and we're asking everybody that if you want to, bring your golf carts. If you can't walk, you know, bring your bus, but let's pray.
And what is, what is the parade, what is it called? The event?
Day of Repentance. Day of Repentance.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Milner, council ladies and gentlemen. I'm Deborah Robbins. My husband, Richard Robbins, 208 Arbor Terrace, downtown Aiken, and here to talk about the building of Savannah River National Lab Mixed-Use Facility, which we welcome, soon be a very close neighbor of ours. But we are asking for some consideration. We met with Mary Tilton and the project manager last week and saw what will be presented tomorrow evening at the Planning Commission. And we had some nice discussion and exchanged some ideas, but the main consideration we're asking for is to, for consideration for light pollution and noise pollution. And a picture's worth a thousand words. Many of the units that will face the area and propose parking area, I took a picture out from my dining area and with a vehicle, my vehicle set ten feet, probably a little bit more than ten feet back from our, our building, and that's with privacy shade. And then, other than that, and so this gives you a little better perspective, and if you had a couple vehicles there, that's quite a bit of irritation coming into living space. And all but the, all the center units have windows that are, have basically these windows with coming into living space for light. So, and we understand our, our units are zero lot line, and the city, back in year 99, 2000, approved that, and so we're asking for maybe some extra consideration as this city moves forward with this wonderful project that's going to do great things, I think, for, for Aiken, that maybe consider the orientation of how the building and how, how all this is laid, laid out, because all that lot, like those are residences, but the other side of that acre is primarily businesses and not residents, so maybe we could do a little flip. That's all I have to say. And, and that's my warm-up for the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have had several good discussions with the Robinses and have talked to the architect about, about making sure that that is addressed so any light pollution is minimized. Again, what the solution is yet, we've got some options, but that is certainly something. We've had very productive conversations with Ms. Robbins and her neighbors.
Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening. Lynda Johnson, 515 Parkside Drive. I'm just here to let you know that you're going to have a great opportunity next Thursday, so a week from this Thursday on March 21st, to learn that historic preservation, it's not for sissies, it's also not just for history nerds like me, it is for people and towns who want to be strong economically, who want to not just survive, but thrive. So Donovan Ripkema is a national expert in the economics of historic preservation. He has studied dozens of cities around the country and helped them do, use historic preservation as a way to increase the value of their downtowns, of their, their homes and properties. And we, Historic Aiken Foundation had him visit here a year and a half ago, and Councilwoman Gregory suggested that maybe it was a good time to bring him back to talk to groups in Aiken about why historic preservation and how historic preservation can be really good for Aiken. So there are going to be multiple sessions that Thursday, but two that are opportunities for the council members and that I really, really hope you attend at least one of them. We're going to have one at 3:30 in the afternoon for council, city staff, kind of focused on them, and then another one at six o'clock that's open to the public. Now, the one at 3:30 will also end up being open to the public because when council meets, it needs to be open to the public. But that one in particular, we are hoping that you all come and, and listen to what Donovan has to say, but also challenge him, say, wait a minute, what about this? What about that? And be able to prove to yourselves that historic preservation is a smart thing to do. Whether or not you like those old buildings, it is the smart thing to do economically. So just wanted to put that out there. I think you've heard about it already, but, and you'll be getting more information. It's going to be over at the African-American Center, 3:30 and 6 o'clock. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynda. Should we mention the chamber one or no? I don't see anybody else. We now move to approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beedenbell.
Thank you. We have the following for consideration this evening. The reappointment of Scott Truitt to the Senior Commission, Chan Carmen and Jack Wetzel to the Equine Committee, John Carmen to the Energy and Environmental Committee, and Butch Roberson to the General Aviation Commission.
Is there a motion to accept these nominations?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion. Is there a second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll made the second, seconded the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from the council? All those in favor? Unanimous. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I have one. I have Nancy J. Robb for the Arts Commission.
Did you get that?
Nancy.
Nancy Robb?
Robb.
For the Arts Commission.
R O B B?
I have Pat Corey for the DRB.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination as well. I'd like to nominate Barbara Morgan for the Design Review Board.
Anybody else? Anything else at this time? Okay, we now move to second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to extend the lease for Flawless Glow Cosmetic Studio LLC located at 106 Lawrence Street Southwest. Mr. Beedenbell, please.
Thank you. We do have these leases back for second reading. We had a first reading in January, and we had some discussion and, and with the tenants, what we're propos, what is being proposed after additional discussion is a four-year lease, no option to purchase, and in years two, three, and four, a hundred dollar per month increase in the lease in years two, three, and four, tenant option for, tenant option in year five for the property. I guess the, they're all identical, but we have to do them one at the time. The first one up is Flawless Glow Cosmetic Studio.
Is there a motion?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion.
I second the motion.
Councilwoman Price seconded. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from council?
I have a comment to make. Their lease expires on, expired on January 31st, 2024, so we're talking about a four, three-year lease or four-year lease?
Four-year lease.
Four-year lease, with the option of having a fifth-year lease.
A one, a one-year option, correct.
Which will be, which will run through January 31st, 2029.
That's correct. Since the lease expired January 31st, the existing lease called for, you know, month to month.
I made it state, and I just want to make sure that we've got that in the minutes and on the record, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a question or a comment. I'm a little concerned that if we do this, like, in this form, we're going to devalue the cost of the property, because if somebody buys it, wants to redevelop it, they have to wait four years to do that, and they have carrying costs in that which will go into the cost of the building. So their pro, their purchase would be based on that, and they, that would lower their option or their, the money they're going to offer us for it. So I have a little concern about having a straight four-year lease. I'd much rather see us have a clause in there that allows them to renew every year, and that way, if a new owner comes in, they can renegotiate their own lease.
Exactly.
Sure. So I would make suggestion that we put that clause in there.
Madam Mayor? May I?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the term of the lease one bit. I mean, this happens all the time, and we discussed this at the last, last time we came to the table. Many developers and people that purchase properties, they purchase with leases already in place, and so...
It's attractive.
Correct. It can be. I think every developer's different, and I think people that invest in the property look for different things, but that is one of the things that a lot of them look for, and, and maybe some don't, but it's very common, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with
Mayor, just to sort of throw my two cents' worth, and Jeanette and I discussed all of this. I was concerned, and told her as much, that the three, that four years was a long time with the option, that perhaps three years are another one, but she convinced me that she's full bore ahead and wants to do this. If everybody was enthusiastic about their business in the world, everybody'd make a million dollars, and I wouldn't bet against Jeanette, quite frankly. But at any rate, what Andrea basically says I agree with. I know I sold my building, the lady expected to run them out within a year, they had a year lease remaining, and one of them left because of the fact that he wasn't making enough money before she ran them, and that was over two years ago. So I don't think it's going to be that big of an issue in the overall scheme of things. Since Jeanette and I talked about it, I'm not concerned that she doesn't know this because we did talk. Ginger Bee, I want them to understand, they're committing to four years, which means it goes both ways. In four years, you're going to have to live up to that whether you like it or not unless you're released from the, from what the terms of the lease are. We're looking to sell the property. Hopefully, somebody else will own it and you'll have a new landlord that you'll be dealing with at that time. Might be tough, but those things happen, which we see all the time of people come and go. So, anyway, that's my feeling on this matter.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. I don't mind saying that I hesitated to my colleague, Councilman Wolf, on four years. I hesitated, Jeanette, in terms of approving four years plus one year. But knowing how small businesses have suffered, and the agony you go through, and if you have a lease year by year, you don't know how to plan in terms of year by year. And then I wrestled with, we'll have a potential new owner of this property. What will he or she think with a new owner, and you still have the lease out, and whether we should have, should have had a clause in the contract that negotiations would take place with the new owner and the leaser with the building? And I thought, okay, here's another worry that the person that has the lease would worry about, which is why I went with the four years, wrestle with the fifth year in terms of extension, but trying to make it easier for small businesses within our community. I just know how stores have closed downtown and how we need to consider all those things.
Hello, how are y'all? Thank you for letting me speak. Cindy Besson, 145 Aberdeen Drive, Aiken. I am a woman who owns business here in this town. A lot of women here understand how hard it is to go shop. I particularly have a hard time because of my business of being a gynecologist and have delivered a lot of babies and can't just leave and go even across the river to Augusta. When we came here 32 years ago, I thought for sure I would be going to Augusta to shop all the time. I never hardly go to Augusta. I stay in Aiken and I shop Aiken because I can walk downtown Aiken just like I did the other day. What day was it?
Friday.
Friday. I've never been in Ginger Bee's store, and I guarantee you, I spent enough money there that it got her attention, and, and it wasn't outrageous stuff. Everything was on sale, wasn't it? Maybe one thing wasn't. Okay? And even the things that aren't on sale are wonderful, and I guarantee you, me and my family, girls, I don't have girls, I have boys, but they're all married or marrying girls, and we all shop at those stores, and I'm so glad that I don't have to go to Augusta. I don't have to go to Columbia. I can shop in downtown, and I appreciate you giving them the confidence. These women are so confident in their business, they will sell you to come back. I promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Besson. Any more comments from council?
Madam Mayor, I think this, Jeanette did a nice job of compromising. You know, we've been up and down and around and all over, and I pretty much concur what Councilman Waltz said, and I, as we said, small business is our backbone, and you all have proven that you can do it, and we're proud of you. So I, I'm going to support this.
I would like to agree with something Dr. Besson said. Always thought shopping downtown would be just too high above my budget, but after participating in the Equine Fashion Show at Woodside with Ginger Bee and Wright and some of the other Affordables and some of the other stores, I was really surprised that there are things in there that I can afford. So we don't have them all. Kato's is gone for me. Rose is still there, but I like Ginger Bee and some of the other shops downtown, and I just, I just would like to encourage you to just go in before you make a judgment. There's something for everybody. I was shocked that they still had my size as well. So thank you very much for maintaining your businesses downtown and keep them open. They'll help you.
Whether you choose, whoever you choose to sell the property to, I've already spoken with one gentleman who's pretty much convinced he's going to buy it, and we, I mean, I kind of didn't want to like him at first because, you know, I'm, I'm just protective of my building, and yes, it's still my building, but I like him, and I do, I like him. And we, I think if, if he happens to be the one that's chosen, we've already worked out a plan for all of our businesses, all three, or actually four. So us being there and having a long-term lease is not a put-off. It actually was a benefit for him because he already had income-producing businesses there. So that was a positive. So us having a longer lease, in my mind, if I was spending however many million dollars and I knew I had some income coming in, that's exactly what I would want. So, not that it's just us, but it makes business sense to me to have income-producing already coming in, in something you're about to spend your money on. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So the motion, the leases as it stands?
Yes, that is my understanding, it's as it stands.
So now, all in favor? All in favor? One not in favor, and the rest in favor.
You need to ask opposed.
But, but, Councilwoman, Councilman Waltz is against, is opposed. I will do better on the next two leases. Next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to extend the lease for Vampire Penguin Aiken LLC located at 108 Lawrence Street Southwest.
So move, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, you have to read that, don't you?
Oh, that is okay. I'm just going to read the title.
It's the same.
Yep. Authorizing the, the city of Aiken to enter into a lease agreement for property located at 108 Lawrence Southwest.
So move, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Price made the motion, and Councilwoman Gregory made the second motion.
And this is for Vampire, the Vampire Penguin business.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Council, Councilwoman Price, Gregory, Diggs, and Broll, and Councilman Gerardo, and the mayor said in favor. Councilman Waltz is opposed.
She didn't know these were one.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
The next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to extend the lease for Ginger Bee Boutique. The next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to extend the lease for Ginger Bee Boutique LLC at 110 Lawrence Street Southwest.
Thank you, and I'll simply, my comments are, this is titled, An Ordnance Authorizing the City of Aiken to Enter Into a Lease Agreement for Property Located at 110 Lawrence Street Southwest. Ginger B.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam. I mean, Mayor.
Price made the motion. Is there a second, council?
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs made the second motion. Comments from the public? Councilman, comments from council?
Just wanted to say to the public that these leases are reading the same time limit, just for your information.
And I suspect that all those in favor will be the same. And Councilman Waltz is opposed. Everyone else is in favor. Congratulations, Jeanette. The next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1940 Huntsman Drive and zone it RS-15 Residential Single Family.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, An Ordnance to Annex Property at 19, located at 1940 Huntsman Drive and to zone the same residential single family RS-15. The applicant has requested annexation of this property. The suggested, the suggested zoning is compatible with surrounding uses and zoning. And the Planning Commission unanimously approved this at their February meeting. Council approved this at first reading and it is before you for second reading this evening.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion since this is in my district. Councilwoman Broll makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Gerardo made the second motion. Are there any comments from the public? Council, comments from council? All those in favor? All those opposed, no, the vote is unanimous. Now we move to second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 922, 924 and 926 Hampton Avenue Northwest and zone it RS-10 Residential Single Family. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, An Ordnance to Annex Property Located at 922, 924 and 926 Hampton Avenue Northwest and to zone the same residential single family RS-10. This is compatible with adjacent city properties. It's contiguous to the city limits. The Planning Commission at their February meeting unanimously recommended approval. And council approved this at first reading.
Is there a motion?
Motion made to approve this.
Councilwoman Price made the motion.
I second.
Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
I just want to comment. I don't know if anyone is here that was part of the renovation of those units. Is anyone in the audience here that did a very good job in restoring those units to a quality area where people can live in those apartments?
And Madam Mayor, if I could just dovetail on what Councilwoman Price, we in our work session had a presentation about donut holes. And right now we just did one in my district, one in your district and your one in yours. So we're making a little headway.
Absolutely, thank you.
So all those in favor? It is unanimous. Motion passed. Next item is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1740 Richland Avenue East and zone it General Business. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, An Ordnance to Annex Certain Property Located at 1740 Richland Avenue East and zone the same General Business GB. This approximately five acre parcel is requesting annexation. General Business zoning is compatible with most of the surrounding uses. There are single-family residences across the railroad track along Cherokee Street. Planning Commission at their February meeting unanimously recommended the annexation and zoning with a condition that the property is conveyed within 180 days to the applicant or the annexation and zoning will be null and void. And council approved this at their first reading on February 26th.
Is there a motion?
I still move.
Councilwoman Diggs?
Sort of sharing the wealth tonight. Everybody's district.
Yes, yes.
Mine's next.
I need a second, I need a second.
Second.
Councilman Waltz seconds the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Is the developer here tonight?
There he is.
Okay. I think I asked you questions before, but refresh my memory.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Kai.
Your plans are?
Sorry, go ahead.
Tell me what your plans are.
Yes, ma'am, we're proposing a five acre display lot for modular mobile homes by Clayton Homes, who is one of the leading developers of modular homes in the country.
But you're going to promise us that it's not going to turn into a mobile home cemetery, right?
No.
Like the one we already have.
No, ma'am, that's certainly not the plan.
These look pretty good.
Thank you.
They're like some quality homes and thank you for choosing District 1.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from council want to make a comment? All those in favor?
Sorry.
Unanimous, the motion passed. The final item under old business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 232 Lakeside Drive and zone it RS-15, RS-15 Residential Single Family. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, An Ordnance to Annex Property Located at 1032 Lakeside Drive Southwest and zone the same residential single family. This is approximately half acre parcel, asking for annexation. It is consistent with the surrounding uses and the zoning. And the Planning Commission unanimously approved this at their February meeting. Council approved this at their last meeting on February 26th.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Gerardo made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Councilwoman Price made the second motion. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from council?
I get to join the party. District 4 has a new one. One of the donut hole says goodbye. And it's my back door neighbor.
You're working on it.
Our dogs yell at each other all the time.
So all those in favor? It's unanimous, motion passed. We now move to new business. The first item under new business is resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement with LED Aiken Incorporated. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. We have a resolution authorizing this purchase. How did we get here? I won't go into quite as much detail as I did last time, but this is the second step that I described at the last meeting as part of the $20 million allocated to the city of Aiken for a mixed-use office building. We are, we are looking to purchase this lot on the 100 Northwest block of Newberry Street. It's actually three parcels over an acre with a purchase price listed of $752,230.23. The cover memo lays out all the charges. The appraisal we had for the bill, for the lot came in at $790,000, which is higher than the proposed purchase price mentioned above. We're buying it from LED Aiken Incorporated, which is a for-profit arm of Aiken Corporation. And basically they're getting reimbursed these fees and costs laid out in the cover memo by us purchasing this property should council approve. We work, are continuing the transparent process of this construction project that could house the Savannah River National Laboratory and fulfill a partnership between the lab and University of South Carolina, Clemson, South Carolina State, Georgia, University of Georgia, Georgia Institute of Technology and USC Aiken. As the Robins are wonderful neighbors adjacent to the property noted, we, we are in the initial stage of design. Our source of funds is a portion of the $20 million of the plutonium funds. The council approved that several, two meetings ago for the, or excuse me, at a recent meeting, approved the budgeting of the $20 million. So we will be using those plutonium funds, a portion of that. This is part of the budget for the project. And we have this in the form of a resolution, a one-reading resolution to purchase said property. Madam Mayor and council.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I still move, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Waltz, second the motion. Are there comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? It's unanimous, the motion passed. The second item under new business is first reading of an ordinance to enter a water and sewer agreement with Project Sunny. Mr. Beedenbaugh.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled, An Ordnance Authorizing the City to Enter Into a Water and Sewer Agreement with Project Sunny. We have continued to be in discussions with the potential industry that is known as Project Sunny. We have been given permission to state it is House of Rayford, which is a poultry processor. It is a $185 million investment that would employ 900 workers at a starting rate wage of $18 an hour plus health and other fringe benefits. What is under consideration is a contract for water rates to be charged in an in-city commercial rate. And we have that precedent with industries in our industrial parks and our largest water user AGY, which is located between SC Highway 4 and US Highway 78. The sewer charge would be in-city sewer rate with an additional discount noted, 30% discount on the commercial rate. If the, up to 2 million, 2 million 5,200 cubic feet, which is 15 million gallons. And then anything above that would be a 45% discount. So using the example, a sample example, if 5 million cubic feet of water were used in one billing period, a billing period is typically approximately a month, that's 37,402,600 gallons. There would be a water charge of $82,170 and a sewer charge of $94,325. When you tack, add in the basic industrial meter charge that's monthly, $1,663, you would result in a hypothetical charge of $178,158. And this is for council consideration at first reading this evening, Madam Mayor and council.
Is there a motion? Councilman Waltz made the motion.
Second.
I have a second with Councilman Gerardo. Any comments from public? Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor, council. Kurt Hanna, 134 Marion Street Northeast. I'm actually here to speak on behalf of someone else, Kevin Pathic, who represents the seller on this particular project, wanted me to read an email. He's out of town this week and asked me to read this for him. Members of Aiken City Council, I'm writing to you about Project Sunny and appealing to you to strongly consider placing your support behind this project. As a caveat, I do not want to fully disclose that one of, or I do want to disclose it, fully disclose that one of my clients is the owner seller of the property. So I have a client with a vested interest in the property. I do not represent the buyer and I have not been involved in the project since the buyer's attorneys and consultants are handling all aspects of it. However, upon learning about, more about the project, their plans, corporate culture and the potential impacts, I obtained permission from the buyer to publicly support their project on a personal level. As some of you may be aware, my passion and volunteer time have surrounded mentoring activities in our schools and community. There are so many youth in our community who are at risk and fighting an uphill battle to stay in school and ultimately graduate. Often their, their employability and futures come down to whether they can win the battle and graduate or obtain a GED because without it, they are at a disadvantage in employment circles. Not to mention, many of the youth I have worked with ended up with a criminal conviction on their record in their late teens or early twenties and that record further decreases their chance of employment. Even when they mature and want to set off on a positive path, their criminal history and lack of education is a hurdle to their future. Upon learning more about the company behind Project Sunny, I became very excited about the culture of this company and the potential opportunity they bring to our community. Below are some of the highlights of this project and company. $185 million invested, creates 900 new jobs, $30 million in annual payroll earnings, $10 million in state grants invested in our community. $3 million of revenue in the first three years goes to county and schools. Many of those jobs would seek housing in Aiken's North Side if available and help us justify an investment in nearby retail and housing developments. For the company, their second chance employer who will give everyone a chance to work. Average pay is $18 to $19 per hour plus benefits. That's just shy of $40,000 plus benefits. Benefits include healthcare with employer paying 95% of employee and family premiums, long-term and short-term disability employer paid, 401K with up to 6% company match, scholarship program with eligibility for employee, children and grandchildren. Philanthropic company that will invest in our community's causes. Facilities are state-of-the-art, well-designed and aesthetically pleasing facilities that will be an attractive appearance along our highway, road frontage as people enter our community. From everything I've learned so far, I definitely believe that the upside of this company, good pay and generous benefits, positive culture, community support and a second chance employment mindset is worth an investment in our community. I believe that in the long run, the entire Aiken community, city, county, schools, workforce, et cetera, will benefit from this project. I strongly encourage each of you to meet the company's executives, listen closely to the opportunity they bring and consider voting in favor of Project Sunny. I know today's meeting is just a first reading and there are other considerations being discussed between the project owner and our city staff and council with regard to utility pricing and discounts. I suspect those discussions will continue to progress as questions are asked and information is shared in the weeks to come between now and a final decision on approval. I wish I could be there today to support this project and speak in its favor, but unfortunately I'm out of town visiting my daughter. However, even if you still have questions or concerns or perhaps are currently opposed to the project, I would ask each of you to vote favorably in support of the project on the first reading, this first reading, so that discussions can continue and more information can be provided. This project will provide a much-needed boost to our economy and to the north side of our city. And in my personal experience, I know there are many young adults I have met or mentored and others like them who desperately need this project to go forward. Please keep them in mind as you vote this evening. Sincerely, Kevin E. Pathic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, sir? Yes.
Good evening, council and mayor and Mr. City Manager. My name is Jensen James. My address is 138 Florence Street Southwest. I just have a couple of questions. I'm neither in support nor against the current proposal, but I do want to know, is there a sunset clause with how long that a, that these corporations get to have a reduced rate in utilities? Because utilities are going up on the average individual quite substantially. And we know that many people in this city are paying a lot for their utilities. And it's, it's, I see people, especially closer to the holidays, who are making a decision whether to pay their utilities or to have a gift for little Johnny under the Christmas tree. So I'm just wondering, is there a sunset clause on, not just this project, just in general? I'm trying to learn more as I get more involved. I'm very interested in making sure that we do incentivize what sounds to be a very awesome potential employer here that will hopefully employ and give people second chances because we all deserve second chances. we all deserve second chances. But, that was just really my question, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to?
Yes. The rate, anytime rates are increased, they would pay the increased rate. The agreement runs for 30, 3-0, 30 years.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Jacob Ellis, Three Short Court. I welcome this project. The North Side is in dire need of investments, and Aiken is in need of industry investments. So, I welcome this potential project. But, my question is, before we give water insurance rate incentives to a corporation, shouldn't we be looking at the brown water problem that our citizens are facing in the downtown areas still? We should look at that before we go and give all these incentives to an employer. They were here first. They live here day in and day out. They deserve non-brown water. Thank you.
That's an excellent point. We already give these incentives to other industry, and we are embarking on our unidirectional flushing program, which will address the concerns. We had a presentation about that last fall by our Engineering and Utilities Director, and we are going to be moving, moving it out into the next phase later this spring. So, we have been, and I think that's a point well taken.
Thank you. And more comments from? Yes, sir? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Clint Leach, Assistant Commissioner for the South Carolina Department of Agriculture. Just wanted to, if you would allow me, I'll be very quick, to give you some, a little bit of brief history and perspective on the positive developments of this project. South Carolina's agribusiness industry is the state's largest industry, equating to approximately $52 billion in annual economic output to our economy, resulting in approximately 260,000 jobs for our fellow South Carolinians. We've worked very hard over the last 10 to 12 years to grow the size of our industry and the number of jobs in our industry, all the way back to 2010 during a recession when other industries grew or did not grow. Agribusiness is one of the few industries that grew. When we look at the future of agriculture in the state and across the nation, there are a lot of hurdles that farmers are currently facing. It's high input costs, high fuel costs, high transportation costs, nothing unique to Aiken County or the state of South Carolina. On top of that, the average age of South Carolina farmers is creeping up every year, and right now is just shy of 60 years old. So, we have to find the next generation of farmers, and if you are like me, who likes eating three times a day, it is paramount that we do that. Before you, Project Sunny is a game changer. We are in full support of this project, not because of the capital investment and the jobs described here just a few minutes ago, but how this facility, a state-of-the-art facility, will transform what poultry and agriculture can be for the state of South Carolina. But, more importantly, it creates untold opportunities for farmers not inclusive of this $180 million capital investment figure. And I say that because on top of the production facility, Aiken County farmers, Saluda County farmers, Edgefield, all the way down to Hampton County are going to have an opportunity to invest up to another $100 million, and that's important for rural South Carolina, and that's additional jobs that we will be able to keep into our economy. This project is, is, is a great example of where we can go. I know our state and I know the city's officials have met with the, with the company that we're talking about this evening. We've, we've looked at their facilities in other parts of the state. They have three other facilities, and I will say that they are great corporate citizens. Anytime that we've ever had an issue arise in those communities, they are the first to jump up and try to remediate those issues. So, again, on behalf of our state's 25,000 farmers, this is an opportunity that we have been searching for and working on for numerous years. This project helps keep economic activity in rural South Carolina. It keeps our family farms continuing to prosper. It continues to build upon our state's diverse economy, and it will give South Carolinians an opportunity to grow and keep more food in-state instead of sending it out-of-state. So, for that, we are extremely proud to be involved in this project, and we would strongly encourage each of you to support this project.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Laverne Justice, 616 Hampton Avenue, and I believe in giving people third, fourth, fifth chances if necessary, not just second chances. I also believe in furthering education as well. You know, you said you're going to pay $18 an hour, and today that's really almost minimum wages. So, you need to also look into furthering education, to offer them some scholarships or something there. But, my main concern is, I live on the North Side of town, most of you know that, and there's a problem. I just called last week about the water being brown when it rains, especially when there's a hot rain. So, we could look into the water improvement on the North Side of town, especially at 616 Hampton Avenue. The water has been brown there for a while. That is a family home. I grew up there. We didn't have this problem years ago. It just started. Problem, as I said, in the last two years, when it rained hot, don't know what happened, maybe the drains get stopped up or something, but the water is brown. One time, I had residue, like little sand, in my bathtub. That has never happened because of the water. So, I believe in improving Aiken, but also look, look into what we have now. I've been a longtime resident of Aiken, South Carolina, and I have never had this problem with brown water. I do not drink the water. I do not cook with the water. I have bought bottled water for years, and I'm tired of doing that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laverne, I do want to respond to what you said, I think is important. We had a work session earlier regarding Hampton Avenue and infrastructure concerns regarding that. We all know that the infrastructure in our town in some parts is aging, has aged for, it's over 75 years in some of the areas, close to 100. And we had a presenter talk about Washington Circle and other locations that we know needed badly, and your area as well needs some changes badly. We talked about investing in those and funds to do that. So, I'd like to brief you, at some point in time, I think you attend some meetings with, with an organization, the Schofield, which, which one do you attend?
Sometimes I do.
Okay. We'd like to brief you on that information regarding what was discussed at the work session.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Comments from council?
I would just like to thank the young man that came from, I'm not sure, but just gave us the information from an agricultural perspective.
USDA.
USDA. That means a lot, to hear that. I had some questions. We all did.
Yes.
Had a good presentation tonight, and we're pretty pleased with the project, especially how they reach into the community and provide different programs for our young people. So, I just appreciate you coming and sharing that information with us tonight.
Madam Mayor? May I add on to that? What Councilman Diggs had just said, this company, it's unbelievable what they give back to the community. There was a high school that they couldn't afford to have a prom. This company underwrote the whole prom. They've taken 75 kids to DC and paid for all of their expenses. They're very involved with JROTC, ROTC. They took some, 26 kids on the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, to Pearl Harbor. So far this year, they've given six and a half million back to the community. That's a pretty large commitment. So, it's not only, and they take care of their employees. We heard what they do for their employees. Their benefits are excellent.
And their families.
And their families, yes. And their families. They talked about one that had to be out. They covered him the whole time. Their drug program, no one pays anything more than $75, even for a Tier V medicine. Now, I don't know if any of you have had to deal with that. I have had to do that a couple of times, and that is extremely expensive. Most places don't cover much of anything in a Tier V. So, they have certainly proven that they are committed to the community. And this, was it Mr. Leach, was it, that said, they are, they have proven what they do. They are good community members.
Not to mention the scholarships and sending kids to academies that never would have been able to not only enroll, but actually stay there the entire time. So...
That's good.
We're looking forward to that commitment to our community.
Yes. Our children could benefit by that greatly. Yes.
Mayor, just to finish this end of podium up here, I think it's important for everybody to understand, we're not passing this industry, they've still got another hoop to jump through, two or three, when they go to the county. We're voting on providing water. It's in our water district. It will not be in the city of Aiken. It's in the county. So, I think it's important for everybody to understand that this still has lots more to go, and if you want to support it, you're going to have to go to the county when it gets to that point. But, at any rate, I just wanted to make that clear.
And also that we are giving them the same rates as AGY here in Aiken.
Yes, and that's a good point. We have a precedent. AGY, which is fiberglass, for those of us who have been around forever, they are the biggest water user in the city of our water systems, and it's the same rate that they're charged is what we're charging for the water. So, there is a precedent for that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do, Mayor. I found that we had a great meeting with, very informative meeting, let me leave it at that, with the owners, who I felt, once we passed the flowery things, the real things. Some of the things that I personally was concerned about was the environmental things that, as Laverne has mentioned, in terms of, that you've got to be careful about. And those questions, I believe, environmentally, based on my interpretation of what honesty looks like, they were pretty upfront and honest with what they knew could determine or predict environmental concerns when you have a poultry plant within reach and that location is within reach of families and other industries. And they welcomed other questions. They were not afraid of answering honestly with these questions. And oftentimes, you can tell that someone will give you all the flowers, but what's the details? And that's what we have to look at when it comes to environmental concerns. And they welcomed other comments. So, I was pretty, pretty impressed with the family, with their responses, and we will see what happens after we take more details. I don't mind saying that I'm going to visit some of their locations to see what they, before the next meeting, to see what is there. And I will be honest with you and letting you know what my findings were. But, they, they are pretty, a great family, and seemed very cooperatively in being upfront with what we can expect from them.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I want to thank Project Sunny personnel from House of Rayford for coming and presenting to us. I got tonight probably the bulk of the information that I have received since the beginning. It was a lot of, it was very flowery, I would say, a lot of fluff, good fluff, good community supporters, and, and that's always nice, but it does have to, it does have to do with the business aspect and the detail. And, you know, at the end of the day, we, the city of Aiken, have a very valuable resource that we need to make sure that we are upholding. And so, that's where my bulk of questions are. I love that they do everything for the community, but it comes down to the resources. I heard that they did do a lot for the communities, which was very impressive, but I'm curious and I would love to follow up with you guys to see what, what specifically was, is done for Batesburg Mineta, and what specifically is done for Columbia, West Columbia, because I didn't hear anything about those communities, and they're our neighbors. And so, I'd be curious to hear about them first. So, we'll, we'll follow up with that. You know, we, council took a lot of time to, to invest in the Brunswick Track and to try to establish a, such an important resource for our community, because we hear you guys loud and clear, water is important, we need to preserve it, we need to make sure it's clean, hence the water treatment plant that we are working on, that we needed a new one versus repairing the old one. And then the infrastructure, right, in our neighborhoods and everything to avoid all these things. With all that said, we are looking at a situation where we, and, and the numbers to me don't add up, but that's besides the point, we could get specifics later. We're looking at 33,800 gallons per month usage. That's about 1.126, what, million gallons approximately a day? That's a lot of water. I'm curious about, you know, I know I was told today, you know, this, at the end of the day, is a county project, and, you know, we just need the water from you guys, but it's a community project. And I welcome development all day long into the city of Aiken and our county, but I want information. And so, I'm not going to bore you guys with all the questions I have when it comes to nutrient management plans and all this stuff that has to do with our environment. I did get limited information up until this point, so I went to OSHA. I come from that background, and I did some research with OSHA, and some concerns popped up when it came to contamination, environment issues, water consumption, and everything in between. So, I'd like to give House of Rayford the opportunity to maybe offline address So I'd like to give House of Rayford the opportunity to maybe offline address those questions for me. So, again, I just, I just have questions. Our water is a valuable resource. Three things which are a priority on council, in my opinion. Public safety, infrastructure, parks and rec. Infrastructure, water is one of them. And so I just want to make sure that all my Ts are crossed and my Is are dotted. Because we do defer to OSHA for safety things. I'm sure there's regulations in the state of South Carolina. I know Georgia is great at regulating poultry plants, as they're the largest producer in poultry in the country. So I just, I'm just curious about the specifics. And so I appreciate your presentation with all the fluff, but I want to know the specifics as far as the environment is as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from anybody else from council? All those in favor? Councilwoman Gregory is opposed. Everyone else is in favor.
And let me just state that I want to see this get to the second reading.
The final item under new business is first reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget to include plutonium settlement funds. Mr. Beeden.
Thank you. The ordinance is entitled An Ordinance Amending the Budget of the City of Aiken for the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1st, 2023 and Ending June 30th, 2024 for the General Fund, Road Maintenance Fund, and Water and Sewer Fund. We have eight point five million dollars remaining to be allocated from plutonium, so-called plutonium settlement funds. We've identified, based on council discussion and public discussion, the following funds, which total seven point two five million, a million dollars to Smith Hazel. Generations Park, three million dollars. Pedestrian improvements, including Sid Waltz and Accessibility, two million dollars. Children's Place Playground Equipment, five hundred thousand. Pine Lawn Cemetery, two hundred thousand. For property maintenance assistance, bike lanes, five hundred thousand, A D D A, fifty thousand. And we still have a million twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand to allocate. And this is a budget amendment, so therefore it's an ordinance which requires two readings and denied this first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So Councilwoman Price made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Gerardo made the second motion. Any comments from the public, please? Mrs. Good evening.
Good evening. Lucy Knowles, 504 Berry Road, in the city of Aiken. I'm here on behalf of the Preservation Foundation of Aiken to ask that some of the remaining money be allocated to our Kershaw Demonstration Project. What we would like to do is acquire lots on a block of Kershaw Street. And some of the lots already have houses on them. Those would be rehabilitated. We would put historically appropriate houses on the vacant lots and sell them to owners with covenants so that they would remain in private ownership. And we feel that this supports the city's goal of having private ownership downtown. So thank you for your consideration. Questions?
We had a very productive meeting Saturday morning.
Thank you.
And I'm so happy that you brought the historian with you. I love the project. And I think I told you Saturday morning, I will support the project.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know there was going to be some discussion, because I think initially in the work session, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand. And I know there was some discussion about the, how the money would be spent. And that is, I know I had questions and asked the supporters of this Kershaw Street Corridor project to reach out and speak to council. So that's why it's not on here. But I know at least that those conversations have begun.
Lucy, again, thank you and the team for the meeting on Saturday. There were several of us present in that meeting. Great feedback, again, from you and some of the others that were present as well. But Stuart, I'm concerned, how do we, how do we phrase this in terms of the funds? Do we amend the motion for the consideration of this?
Yeah, if council so desires, and I would like the parliamentarian to interject. I've been around him enough. I believe a council person can ask if the original motion can be amended. And then if the motioner and the second agree, I'm not trying to take your job. I'll let you speak.
You're fine. You had it just right.
I don't want your job.
It's okay for, it's okay for any council member to suggest an amendment to the motion. Then the mover and the seconder would have to approve the amendment.
My other question to our city manager is, do we want to give the exact amount or just, how do we phrase that to?
I would say seven hundred, I mean, we would just, seven hundred and fifty thousand was, I think, the initial number. I know the initial request was one million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand or seven hundred and twenty-five. So it's, again, with other projects, I know it's a, the North Side, they're, the, one of the things I think that initially was attractive when it was first brought up was the partnerships with the Land Conservancy, the city, and the Preservation Foundation. I believe there, isn't there another partner as well?
Schofield Community Association.
Yep. So there's multiple entities that are bringing, bringing so-called skin in the game, as they say today.
So do we want to say the one point seven million or just the seven fifty starting?
Well, these, that would, we don't have one point seven to allocate.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty, why are you grateful? Thank you.
Is the amendment to the motion made?
That would be Councilwoman Price amended the.
My motion, first.
Allocate funds.
Yes.
What's the official name of the Kershaw Street? Is it?
Kershaw Street Corridor Project, I believe, is what we've been colloquially calling it.
Yeah, the Kershaw Demonstration Project.
My apologies, demonstration, not corridor.
Any other questions for me?
I guess, you know, the one thing that we were missing was the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was in the work session. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. And again, they, when it was discussed after the last work session, I left it out because I told the folks, their team members to speak, you know, to start working with council based on the direction of the, of that project.
Okay, so in the work session, we were talking about doing the Parkway.
That is correct.
Like what we did on Park Avenue as far as the renovations of the park. Are we talking about buying lots now or?
Well, I mean, that's where.
The foundation would buy the lots.
Okay, and y'all are going to build the houses?
We're asking basically for seed money to get this going. So we can buy the lots and then help with the construction of the houses and the renovation.
And two lots are being donated.
Two lots will be donated.
Okay. You two are okay with it. That's going to be good for me.
Councilwoman Diggs seconded the motion to amend the. So all those in favor?
Well, wait a minute. Does anybody else have anything?
Anybody?
You're not finished.
Lucy said her piece. There might be somebody else.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Lucy.
All those in favor?
Wait a minute.
The public.
Anybody else?
Sorry, getting.
Public comment.
More public comment, please.
Then comments from us.
Comments from council. Thought we did that. Okay, so we have, now we need a, all those in favor, a vote.
So, so the motion, you added, you made the original one.
Right, and then I amended the motion.
Okay, and you said, we got a little out of order, but okay, all right.
Seven fifty, is that right?
Seven fifty.
Yes.
We're asking to approve the amended motion.
Yes, yes, sir.
And we had Councilwoman Price and Councilwoman Diggs.
Now we're voting, period, just once.
Now I'm asking for who is in favor. That is unanimous. The motion's passed.
Yep.
That's fair enough.
That was a good idea. Will you do that?
What they voted on was the memorandum, it's an ordinance, to approve the dispersal of this money as set forth in the city manager's memorandum with the addition of an allocation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Kershaw Demonstration Project.
We now move to petitions and requests. The first item is approval of a recommendation for real estate and marketing services for city-owned downtown properties. Mr. Beeden.
Yep, we, in December, we got council approval to release an our request for qualifications for a marketing firm. And I'm going to ask the assistant city manager to describe this. I had a, I had a distant relative that participated, so I need to just let, hand it off to Ms. Tilton.
Thank you. At the request of council, city staff issued a request for qualifications for a marketing and real estate firm to assist the city with the sale of city-owned downtown parcels. Two thirty-five Richland Avenue West, one twelve B Lane Southwest, two eleven Richland Avenue West, two oh three Richland Avenue West, and one thirteen Newberry Street Southwest. On February twenty-second, five staff members, me, Lex Kirkland, George Grieve, Sabina Craig, and Rebecca Seymour, interviewed teams from S V N Blackstream and Colliers. These were the only two firms that submitted qualifications to the city-issued RFQ. And both companies had impressive qualifications. They were both very well-prepared for the interview. And while the selection team felt either company could provide the city with quality services, we, Colliers scored higher than S V N Blackstream after the interview. So therefore, we recommend that the city proceed with engaging Colliers to market and sell the downtown parcels for redevelopment, renovation, and/or adaptive reuse. We were impressed with the depth of their experience, knowledge, professional team, and demonstrated ability to reach a wide audience of potential investors. And members of Colliers are here today.
Is there a motion?
Trying to think what the motion would be. So moved, move to approval of a recommendation for real estate and marketing services for city-owned downtown property.
Councilwoman Gerardo. And do we have a second? Councilwoman Brolle seconded the motion. Comments from the public, Mr., yep. Mr., Dr. Garnett, how are you?
I'm David Garnett. I live at three twenty Fairway Road Southwest. And I have an office on Fairfield Street downtown. My family has done business with Colliers for eighty-five years. They were originally Keenan Kitterell Company, Walter Keenan and Burley Kitterell. They're no longer with us. We have, I have the highest faith in their ethics and their professionalism. And I just wanted to say that because in the situation we have now, Project Renaissance is over. Hascalus is over. This is our third strike. And we need to make it count. Thank you.
Thank you very much. More comments from the public. Good evening.
Good evening. Donna Wesby. Just a quick question about this and doing some research, just to learn more about the project and moving forward. A friend mentioned to me, will the company who you all are voting on now have a part in appraising that property also?
That's one of their charges. They have to get the property appraised before it's listed.
Okay, because if I'm not mistaken, could it present a conflict of interest situation if they are participating in the appraisal? And then they also get to broker it?
They would not, they would hire an independent appraiser. They're, basically, they're going to be taking this responsibility from the city. And they will be putting together the package to market it. The city does not, I think it's, as the previous speaker noted, we need to let some, a professional do this. But they would be doing their, again, it would be hiring someone to get the property appraised. I do not believe it would be Colliers that would be appraising it per se.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think ever since the two thousand eight Great Recession, a lot of those rules have changed. I'm not a Realtor, but I know a lot of those issues involving real estate and appraisals and so forth. It's a, it's a different world now.
I'm Becky Lee Phillips, the main. Call me Becky Phillips. My address is one seven one Fig Grove Lane. Still hadn't taken the whole appraisal down from not living there after it burning. You think they'd do a package deal on all of them? On all the houses? I might be homeless, honey, but I got real good credit. And soon as mama goes bye-bye, I got a lot of money coming because my daddy worked real hard. And my mission in life is to get these people off the streets. And if I got to pay for it myself, then I have to do that. So maybe if somebody can come up with some numbers and let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Ms. Johnson?
Lynn Johnson, five fifteen Parkside Drive. First of all, congratulations to the city. You did a good job of getting the RFQ out, getting two really solid proposals in. As Mary said, either one of them could have done a good job. I'm acquainted with both of them. I'm excited that Colliers is one that you've selected. They have a nationwide reach. They, they have talked about opportunities for that block that I think show that they really understand what could be done with those properties. So again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I hear that someone from Colliers is here this evening?
Yes, I think several members of their team is here. Mr. Tap is, in the green necktie, is the, has been the point person for, on behalf of Colliers. But they do, and as was mentioned by Ms. Johnson, a lot of, both had very good qualifications. But Colliers has, is bringing up a very good team to the table.
I was going to say, we aren't going to hear anything from anybody?
I mean, if Mr. Tap, if you want to come up, yeah, if you want to come up and make some comments, absolutely. We're dying here.
Come on up.
If I don't know the answer, I will get it for you.
We just want to hear from you.
I would like to say one thing to start off with, to answer the lady's question about appraisals and brokerage. The, Colliers doesn't own any. The, Colliers doesn't own any real estate, we do not participate in development, all we do is work for our clients, so we do not enter into a listing agreement with the idea of we are going to participate in the development itself as a partner in the development, we do not have any conflicts of interest, and that is one thing we take pride in. Um, and one of the things that we, matter of fact, when we went in for our interview, that was the first thing we pointed out to the, to the, to the city, that we do not have a conflict of interest. Having an appraisal done on the property in a case like this, this is a very unique situation, and an appraisal, we can, we can have an appraisal, but a developer or developers that come in are going to make offers on the property based on what their vision for the property is, and how they perceive in, to best develop it. It's not going to be a cookie cutter, everybody's going to be a little bit different, um, and that is one of the things that we propose to the city, that we don't dictate the market, we let the market forces compete, you know, and get the highest value for the city. So, again, we have no conflict of interest between, uh, an appraisal and whatever the brokerage price may be.
Thank you.
Just for the record, those who are watching you on TV right now, just state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Tommy Tap.
Okay.
I am from Columbia, South Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tap, for explaining that, and, uh, we all were giving, given your proposal that we looked over, and as, uh, Ms. Johnson said, both of them were yours, and, uh, the other one was excellent. And I think, as we move forward, we can expect some really good things. Thank you for taking the time to be here and to be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And council will get to know, should this be approved, uh, Colliers really well as we move towards an ultimate, um, what we hope is an ultimate, um, conveyance to someone to, uh, develop the property.
And, uh, I look forward to talking to you, and I will probably drive you crazy once we get to that particular point in time. I've been a real estate appraiser in Aiken for, for years, and if there's one thing I learned over the time, uh, it's impossible locally to appraise a building like that, uh, and what's all involved, there's more than one building.
This is a very unique situation, and one of the things I think if you, in our proposal, we pointed out that there is a difference between hospitality appraisal, apartment appraisal, and Colliers takes appraisal one step further. We actually have hotel valuation expert in our Atlanta office that can give us guidance, not necessarily appraisal, but they can help us understand what the property is worth as a, as a hospitality property. You want to, would you like to speak to that? This is my project, she specializes in hospitality throughout the southeast, um, and she is a hospitality expert for Colliers.
Good evening. My name is Alia Bostaji, I am the hotel broker in the Colliers office for the South Carolina market. So, as far as the appraisal for hotels and, uh, how it's going to be done, it's actually, it's going to be looked at after, like, what is the projected ultimate development going to look like? And then back into that, what is the value of the site would ideally, should be, to pencil out this deal for a developer to actually take it and move forward with it?
Right.
And this is how we usually kind of like go about sites of complexity like this, you back into the, uh, site value, rather than establish a dirt value and then move into a big project like this.
Right, have, have you been in it?
I haven't personally, but I am part of a team of thirty-five, um, hotel, uh, professionals, uh, specialists, or, uh, nationwide. I have been in the building, I thought Tap.
You did go in the building, I was gonna say, you went when we did.
I was gonna say, if you haven't been in it, you've got a lot to look towards. Okay, good.
But I was gonna say, I thought you went when we did the, uh, bribery for the vendors.
I have done.
That's better, thank you.
Thank goodness, because...
You and Sabina.
The first time I went in it, I was like, oh, boy. Do y'all consider highest and best use, obviously, I've been in with an architect, and he said that he, in his opinion, the highest and best use was as apartments, because of the rooms being so small, and trying to figure out how to make them bigger, or just adding two rooms together, and new stuff, all the way around. It's gonna be a, like you said, it's a unique property with a whole lot of work that's gonna be involved.
It's going to be challenging, we have seen the engineering of the works, Colliers is unique in, certainly in the southeast, and one of the few, very, very few, real estate companies in the country that has a construction management vision, and our LCK people have looked at this, uh, we've also introduced Rogers Lewis Law Firm to the city that specializes in district tax credit.
That's good. Extremely.
In whatever happens to the building, whether it's apartments or hotels, the harvest of tax credits will, is one of the key things that a developer needs to understand, and we need to make sure they document it and ensure that they can.
Right, that was gonna be question number three, so, very good, uh, I, I figured you had to know about tax credits, because it can't be done unless you do tax credits.
You have to have, you have to be able to harvest those taxes.
Right, it wouldn't be economically feasible without it, so that's, that's important. So, great, look forward to moving forward, if we pass it, I guess, don't want to...
Is there a motion?
I got a question.
I have one.
We already have a motion.
Oh, yeah, is there? Comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why have we cut out the motor court?
I'm sorry?
Why does it say, with the exception of the motor court in this?
No, meaning it can, it, it, the, it can be demolished, uh, the goal here is to find an adaptive reuse, uh, except the motor court could be adaptive, they could bring us a buyer who would want to tear the motor court down, or, um, or, um, adaptively reuse it, but the rest of it, the goal is to bring someone to, uh, try to adaptively reuse the, the properties, renovate.
Okay, because it doesn't say anything about tearing it down, it just says with the exception of...
Well, I know in the RF...
I understand what you want.
Yes, the...
Remove, renovate, or adapt.
To clarify.
Yeah, it needs to, it should be clarified, because, yes, the goal is to, I guess I've lived this thing for so long, uh, just assumed by osmosis, but you were right, the RFQ requires the developer would ensure all properties be renovated, uh, and/or adaptively reused, with the exception of the motor court, meaning the, if the proposed buyer wants to demolish the motor court, that is acceptable, or if they want to adaptively reuse the motor court, that would be acceptable, assuming they meet all the other criteria at this time.
Do we have to add that in there, or we just all know it?
It's basically just saying, I understand it, that they can tear that down, but none of the other stuff can be torn down.
Yes, that's essentially what it means, in a concise way. I know, this is, it's, it's like an onion.
I mean, I, I think, uh, Councilwoman Wills brings up a good point, we've been living, breathing, eating this, it totally makes sense to me when I read it, but somebody who hasn't, maybe we do have to clarify.
Yes, we can certainly clarify, and certainly any agreement that will be entered into with Colliers that we'll bring back to council will specify in better language what we're trying to, what we're trying to articulate.
Right, and parking is gonna be an issue. Um, in nineteen forty-four, it really didn't matter where the parking, they parked on the street, there was plenty of parking back in those days, that's not gonna be the case every single night, is those parking places, if there's any kind of event worth its salt downtown on a Thursday night, there's nowhere to park right now. So, obviously, somebody's got to look into that, y'all can handle it.
And we are aware of that.
Yeah.
We have, we have discussed that. Oh, I'm sorry, we are very much aware of the potential parking issues depending on the ultimate use.
Right. Good.
Yes.
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I was just gonna tell a little story, um, so, are, are we in council comment now, or? Yeah, okay, uh, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it. Uh, so, once upon a time, not too long ago, um, I called out a few members of our community regarding preservation and, um, historic, um, all that, Ms. Johnson was one of them, and I, I'll, I'll alleviate and not mention the other members. Um, and so, you know, we heard so much about preservation throughout, um, the last couple of years, and, and how passionate some people in our community were about it, so, uh, I said, you know what, let's, let's get to a table, let's talk about it, and they did, they all held me, um, up to having that conversation, so I want to thank Linda, and, um, David, and Louis, and, um, Pat, and everyone that has come to the table to, to discuss this, especially when we decided to go down the route of acquiring the, retaining you guys, and if it gets passed, of course, but, um, so, within that conversation, one of the biggest things that I, um, exposed was in my constituency, the majority, um, they're, they're very adamant about demolition and rebuilding, um, and the numbers are very lopsided in that part of the community. And then we have some people in that part of the community that want to, us to move forward with trying the preservation, um, and rehab. Um, so, we decided at that meeting that it would be a good idea, since we're going in this direction first, so it's a, it's a, you know, we've kind of reset the button, and here we are, moving in this direction, and council agreed that we were gonna go and propose an RFQ to bring on a real estate firm that specializes in this, which was a great idea. So at that moment in time, we, um, decided to, that the biggest issue in our community is education and awareness, and so, how do we educate those constituents that call me all the time, they're like, we want to demo this building, we want to demo this building, and they've seen that we're now taking a different direction, um, and so, why, why, why? So, we decided as a team, and we sat down with Stewart and company, um, and said, well, let's educate the community and provide, uh, awareness as to why this should be the first step. And so next Thursday, that's what we're doing, um, and, uh, there'll be three meetings, ideally, there'll be one, um, with the chamber, the ambassadors and everything, where Donovan, what is his last name, I always forget, okay, that, um, is coming down, and he's a professional, and he's not gonna come and tell us what to do, he's just coming to educate why it's a great approach. Um, and I just want the community to take advantage of just coming and learning as to why this is a good first step. Um, we're trying to get, uh, some of the real estate community to also talk to him, hopefully council will come, uh, it's optional, and, and, and the public will come as well. Again, education, awareness, I just want to put that out there, Ms. Linda spoke about it earlier, um, because I, I know I can learn from it, you know, I had a little bit of a different, uh, vision for the hotel and, during Pascalis, and, um, you know, we're trying this route, which I'm fully on board with, um, and the education will go a long way. So that's one of the reasons we did that. Now with that said, I will state, and I, I'm going out on a limb here, but I will state that as supportive as I am right now about rehab and preservation, because it's a unified team approach that we're wanting to try this route, you know, I also don't think that it needs to linger on forever. And so I'm very cognizant that I certainly hope that the RFP and, and a developer gets chosen and a vision to rehab that hotel occurs within this calendar year, um, because if it doesn't, uh, I will push for a different direction, and if demo is that option, then that's the option I will take. I hope that is the last resort, um, but I want to go on the record saying that, because I've been very vocal about that, uh, in the community, um, so I am a hundred and fifty percent on board with this, I am a hundred and fifty percent on board with you guys finding a professional to rehab and try to make it work, whether it's with tax credits or whatever the case may be, I will be cheerleading it, but it does not need to take forever. Um, that building has sat the way it has sat long enough, and it's really a, a nuisance, and it's a threat to our downtown footprint, because it is a hazard. And so with that, I just, uh, hope everybody comes out next Thursday, uh, a week from Thursday.
Well, and I would say that, uh, timing of something like this is hard to predict. What we will do is try to move the project forward as fast as we can, we have a lot of work to do, Colliers, if we are approved, we have a lot of work to do on the front end for the marketing piece of this, because we, we're gonna, we're gonna have a nationwide reach, but we have got to do our homework. Developers do not, or developers take risk, but they want to take calculated risk, and it's important that we put our best foot forward for Aiken, for the environment, uh, for these particular buildings, so that they can understand everything about it. When they don't have information, they tend to shy away. So, we need to do a lot of work on the front end to make sure that the information that goes out to the historic rehabilitation community, they understand exactly what we've got, we've discussed this with the city, uh, our plans and how we would go about doing this, but we cannot, I can't predict that the property would close in a year, but certainly we would predict that we have a short list of developers. One of the things that we would do, I mean, obviously weed out people, big hat, no cattle, from people that are serious, that have a, a strong track record in doing this type of thing, and that we would certainly want to have them shortlisted and have options presented to the city within a year, uh, but we will, we will work as fast as we possibly can, but it does take time to do our homework on the front end.
Thank you.
And I, I'll echo Andrea, I, I would hope, do, do you have, uh, what, it's hard to do on a property like this, a normal marketing time, um, from your experience?
In this day and time, there's no more, normal marketing.
I agree.
It takes longer, we've got, you know, it's, the Warnakey Cleaners, uh, is, is, it, you know, the environmental there is not insurmountable, but that needs to be taken into account. There are a number of moving parts with this project that we've got to get on top of very quickly, but there, there is no normal time. I mean, what we're finding in our business, all over South Carolina, all over the nation, the gestation period between starting to, even between when you have a contract signed to when you actually close, the period is getting longer and longer.
Yeah, and due diligence is gonna be...
Due diligence period, and, uh, it's, it's, in a case like this, this is a unique property, because it has hotel, it has retail component, it's, it's just, it's unique, and it's gonna take a while, I think, for somebody to, due diligence to get their arms around this, and again, we do have an environmental component to it, too.
And, yeah.
Which is not insurmountable, we have it all the time, but it just...
Right.
That's just part of the process that we're gonna have to work through.
Right, and, uh, and Andrea, I agree with everything she said, that, in terms of wanting to get there, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, hopefully it'll all work out, but at the same time, I understand, it's gonna take a little while.
Right, and you, and I, we certainly understand, you don't want to take forever, I mean, well, yeah, nobody wants to take forever. Oh, well, we've, oh, yes, yes, oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, if it catches on fire, let's not even think about what it'll do.
Well, I mean, I would, I would say that, you know, buildings all across the country are being historic rehabilitation, and one of the examples we used was a, a building on Beale Street and, and, that was... and one of the examples we used was a, a building on Beale Street and, and that was renovated very successfully and turned into a, to a nice hotel that Mark Owens has done, our Colliers New York. Uh, uh, he's the head of our hospitality. There are people out there that can take, that will take a property that looks, uh, that has the challenges that Hotel Akin has and can do something with it. Another thing I would point out to you, that there are a lot of corporations that are pushing or, uh, corp, that one of their corporate, uh, policies is to help and give grants towards historic reservation, uh, preservation. And one of those companies is Kimberly-Clark. Uh, so, there are a lot of companies that, um, would participate in a project like this if they have the information that somebody else we're going to bring into the fold to help educate.
That's great.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. Glad I don't have to do it.
Thank you, Tommy.
Oh, um, the public's already spoken, sir. Sir, the public's already spoken.
My this public didn't. I just wanna say, I think it's absurd to hurry these folks along, when after three years, the council sat there and didn't hurry along. So, whatever it takes to get this done, I think they should have the opportunity to do it.
Thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor? It's unanimous, the motion's passed.
And, and we will bring the agreement back for council approval now that we have permission to, to, to negotiate.
The next item under petitions and requests is recommendations from Accommodations Tax Committee for Visit Akin Funding, Mr. Bean.
Thank you. Uh, we have two recommendations. First is for the, um, we have, um, the Visit Akin budget, which is funded by State Accommodations Tax, and that, um, is a budget of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from State Accommodations Tax, the so-called thirty percent advertising and promotion special funds. And the recommendation is, um, in the, uh, the funding recommended is two hundred seventy-one thousand, a hundred and ninety-five dollars, as listed from the, uh, Accommodations Tax Committee for Visit Akin SC. The amount budgeted exceeds the funding received, but it will be offset by other funding sources. So, this is for council consideration. Um, and I know we have our accommodation, longtime accommodations tax chair Peggy Penland here, um, as well as staff from our tourism division and Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Brol.
I second.
And Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Thank you, Peggy.
Yes.
All those in favor? Unanimous, the motion passed. The next item under petitions and requests is recommendations from Accommodations Tax Committee for allocation of funds for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five cycle.
Thank you. Uh, this is, uh, related to tourism events. Uh, there were requests for five hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. The committee is recommending allocating four hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-three cents to the various organizations for their marketing. And again, you remember, it is a reimbursement, they spend the money, it's the head, so-called heads and beds. And, uh, this is a recommendation to council for approval from the Accommodations Tax Committee.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Councilwoman Gregory made the motion. Need a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Girido second the motion. Are there any comments from the public? Hi, thank you, Ms. Wespe.
Thank you, this is Donna Wespe, we lease a property at eight thirty-one Hain Avenue Southwest. Um, if we could just remind people, as, that who come here, as well as the council, to use the microphones. I have people who are writing me, who are trying to watch the online stream, and if you're not speaking in the mic, they can't hear you. And if you can't really hear yourself, then that means we can hardly hear you out here. So, please, use the mics. Um.
Thank you.
All I wanted to ask is if you could scroll up, and let me see the full list, please. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Comments from council?
Donna, we don't mind sharing a copy of that to you.
I just wanna, Madam Mayor, thank, uh, Peggy and her group, the Accommodations Tax Group for, I know when you go through these, you always try to be fair with everyone, and there's only so much money to go around, but you do a very good job of allocating. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
It's.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I, um, wanted to just, um, pinpoint something. I see that we're ADDA Events and Tourism, um, the committee recommended forty-seven thousand dollars. I, I became privy that, that they are needing two golf carts, um, in the downtown area, which really, um, takes up quite a bit of their funding for the year.
That money is coming from somewhere else.
Yeah, we, we appropriate that at first reading, uh, for the, um, plutonium funds.
Oh, okay, okay, that's great. Oh, look at you, wonderful, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Ma- Madam Mayor, I have a question to ask Peggy.
You knew we weren't gonna just let you sit there and not say.
You sat a long time, Peggy. Well, we should've put you first in terms of getting this.
I'd like to talk to Ms. Wright out about this.
You had to love the real estate talk, I mean.
Question regarding remaining funds, are there not any remaining funds?
Yes, there are.
How much do you have as a remaining fund?
We do not allocate all of the five hundred forty thousand dollars.
And Donna, you may be interested in this, so she'll know, go ahead.
Uh, so, there are funds remaining, but they are only available to those people who have already applied.
Okay.
Uh, there are a couple of, there's one in particular, a very large ask by the Steeplechase, the third application, um, for a new event, and all the members of the ATAX Committee love new tourism events. So, we do everything we can to support them. The problem with this particular application was, they haven't figured it out yet as a board. So, it was like an either-or situation, either it would be a gala the night before the Steeplechase, or it would be a music festival later in May or June. So, because they haven't clarified the application, we weren't able to allo, recommend for allocation the funds that they desire.
Okay.
And really, it's about the application. So, this gives them an opportunity to come back at our September meeting, after all the reimbursements take place, uh, to come back with a firm plan. Because, of course, we have to know what it is we're recommending. And they need to know first, and then they can come back.
Okay.
And I, we do believe that the funds will be there to help them.
Peggy?
Yes.
Are you done, Missy? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, that's okay.
No, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's all right, go ahead. Okay.
Um, you know, I asked this probably every time we go through this, uh, for the African-American Culture Center. Their June, that's just for the Juneteenth event?
That was their application, yes.
Okay. So.
Did we have a year-round program for them? I don't think so. And I just wanna give kudos to Casey Lazon, she's done a really great job.
Thank you, Casey. So, um, can they get some more money if they apply?
Well, after the reimbursement takes place.
Yes.
There may be funds available, I, can they come back? If there's funding available.
Okay.
Well, Umoji Village placed a, an application in, and, um, I don't know whether they were ejected or what.
No, 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 she was well-funded. It's not on the list?
Oh, okay.
Well, it was a very good award.
Right, I was just wondering, okay.
Full funding, she was fully funded.
Okay.
And we are really excited about that gospel event.
Right, it attracts a lot of.
Oh, this is Shout Fest?
Shout Fest, yes. It's a real good one.
Yeah, we could get that number and report it. I would like to report that in the next issues and updates, because, yeah, it did not make it in the, the staff memo.
Can't that be redone?
Does that mean the total's off?
Yes, Casey said yes.
Yeah. I mean, do we want to, I mean, depending on the amount, bring it to the, bring it back?
Okay.
And, this is my first meeting since our new, our ma- mayor, Madam Mayor, has been elected, and I just wanna say thank you and, uh, good luck to you for, in future.
Thank you for serving, again.
You're welcome. Fred Kavanaugh says I can, I can resign if it gets to.
No, you can't, I won't allow it.
It's gotta be called these, Peggy, you know, if it gets to be too much, you can just resign.
Just, I mean, I would, I mean, just so we would make sure we have everything, um, and that we, uh, maybe, and it's up to council, do you wanna continue this to the next meeting, so we can have the corrected memo with all the numbers? Uh, again, these are reimbursements, these events, it's not like these folks are going to be getting funds distributed to them right away, uh, because, again, it is a reimbursement. Uh, but, again, just to make sure council has all the necessary information, we, um, I mean, perhaps we do that, just to make sure if we left off, uh, the, the Shout Fest, we wanna make sure we didn't leave anything else off.
Can the motion, can the motion not be amended tonight?
We can approve, we can approve what's here with amendments coming at our next meeting, is that?
Or we could just continue it and vote, and just.
Or it makes Peggy have to come back.
I'm just wondering if you can't.
Madam Mayor, there's, there's only one reading of this resolution.
Gotcha. Right, you can't vote with an amendment.
Do it later.
That Shout Fest was fully funded.
Yeah, I don't think she has to come back, I mean.
Just, just a thought, it.
Donna, what would you prefer?
Right, right. Wow.
Yeah, I would.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I move that we continue the item, just for completion and accuracy, if you don't mind.
Second.
A second please for the.
I second it.
Councilwoman Diggs.
Price.
Price, yeah. Second the motion.
Yeah, we need, we need to, I, I think, just to redo the memo and have all the projects, um, so we can make sure that it's all there.
We're gonna continue.
We'll continue it to the next meeting.
What was that amount?
Um, twenty-three thousand, six seventy-two fifty, now, hold on, that's Umoji Village, um, yeah.
Umoji, okay.
Twenty-one thousand, one sixty-three, twenty-two. So, we will be glad to look back at what was submitted, what was approved, and.
And, and others, right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, now, all those in favor of?
What do we vote, what do we vote, continuing?
You're voting to continue this to the next meeting.
Yes, it's unanimous, we continued the vote.
Yep, and again, wanna make, uh, sure everyone understands this, these funds are reimbursed upon the expenditure by the listed organizations, so, I don't think it would be a hardship for, um, waiting two weeks.
The final item under petitions and requests is approval of a resolution to accept a deed of dedication for water and sanitary sewer lines, related equipment, and easement for Parker's Kitchen Store number one oh nine on Jefferson Davis Highway.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ben Israel probably drove the furthest tonight and had to wait till the end, so, um, anyway. Uh, we've gotten to know him well. Um, this is a deed of dedication for water and sanitary sewer lines and related equipment easements for Parker's Kitchen located at the intersection of US one and Robert M. Bell Parkway, and is, before council, this approval of a resolution to accept said deed of dedication.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion made for approval, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Price maybe. And Councilwoman Diggs second the motion. Comments from the public?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'd just like to say thank you all very much for your cooperation in getting this site plan, uh, approved, and, uh, with your staff assisting us through the development and construction process. So, we're excited to announce that the store, uh, will be opening on Friday morning. Um, now, yes, this, this Friday morning.
This Friday.
Now, now that you've accepted. Oh, so, so, yeah, so, um, you, you will be receiving an invitation for the grand opening.
Oh.
This is a soft opening.
Oh.
Of the store. Um, we typically open the stores, we do a soft opening, and then, um, in between four to seven weeks after the opening date, we actually ho- host, we will host a grand opening event. Um, the, uh, CEO's office will be in contact with City Council and the Chamber of Commerce to, um, schedule and to make arrangements for that event, um, which will take place sometime, seven weeks out, and, uh, um, around that timeframe. But, thank you all very much for your, your assistance, and now that you've voted to, um, accept the deed of dedication for the water and sewer, and we'll work with staff to get the operations and maintenance letter and get the store opened on Friday. So, we, we, we really do appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Ben, just wanna, just wanna say to you that you've done an excellent job in marketing this and, uh, making use of that space. Thank you for taking a space that's been, uh, sitting there for more than a decade.
It's been a while. It looks great.
It really does.
I rode by and cheered the other day. I don't know that there's any place, at least during my tenure, that is so much improved from what was there before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Wait, 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 any specials for Friday?
Gas is a dollar.
Right, gas, dollars, okay, a dollar a gallon.
Hell, you can't ask that.
I'm not aware of any specials, um, but we will, we'll be happy to have you there on Friday.
She'll be there.
Happy to have you there, no specials, we'll be happy to have.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all.
Thanks a lot. All those in favor? A motion passed, it's unanimous. We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and for a total of thirty minutes.
Give me, I'm Becky Phillips, um, what time is it? Anybody know?
What time is it?
Yeah.
Nine twenty?
I'm tired, I did not sleep. Yesterday, I read in Proverbs, it said that sometime in your life, you come in contact with a shade from the underground, underworld. I saw four of them last night, y'all probably didn't know what happened on Lincoln. I was behind the breaker, sitting, reading. Saw four black men come on the left, three, four of them went to Lincoln, to the field. One of them came back, went in breakers, sat for about two minutes outside, went to Lincoln, I heard two shots, I'm like, what? Then I heard a machine gun, and I dove into the dirt. Then I heard a machine gun and I dove into the dirt. Two more shots, another machine gun, about five minutes later, they were at Colk Crossing. I'm coming before y'all, because forget all this, uh, development, you need to take care of your own because you're not gonna have nothing. There's victims in the hospital now. I'm sixty-two years old, I've never been so scared in my entire life. And that man had the kahunas to come back to breakers and sit outside waiting on his ride. Then he walked in and he saw me and I was on the phone with nine-one-one. If you pray, pray that they find them. But y'all need to take, y'all need seriously, to some of this money, you need to pull up and double Aiken County or Aiken City Police Department, they need some help. This is bad. I live at that inn in Shallow Heights every day and night, you, there's at least police going two or three times down to Shallow Heights. It's time to stop all these drugs, y'all got the money? I'm just telling you, I ain't slept, I don't know when I'll sleep. I thought it was bad enough that I saw that fire and I burn up, almost burn up in my house fire, but I aged ten years that day. How much you think I aged last night? Please pray for the mamas, daddies, brothers and sisters who the victims are. I appreciate all the stuff y'all have done, I will say one thing, I didn't see none of y'all for breakfast or lunch.
Thank you. Mr. Beanbow, are there any items from the city manager's evening?
Yes, uh, just a couple, uh, very brief. Uh, first, uh, with regards to the south boundary, uh, void, uh, fail, road failure, um, the DOT, uh, late this afternoon is still, uh, trying to find the source of the issue, but, um, uh, they are, um, still working on that, as soon as we hear anything, we'll report. Uh, I want to, uh, announce, um, we've got, um, two personnel, or several personnel items. Um, we have first our Center for African-American History, Art and Culture Direct, Executive Director Juanita Campbell is leaving to, um, take a job out at Savannah River Site and she will be missed. And we had as, um, our two, um, two job, um, announcements. Uh, Danielle, Dani Fox is our Capital Project Sales Tax Manager, as noted at the, um, at the, uh, work, at the beginning of the work session. And Sabina Craig is the, uh, Neighborhood Services Manager, uh, Promotion. She climbed up enough times on the roof at the Hotel Aiken to merit the, uh, merit the post. So thank you. Those are my announcements today.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbow.
They certainly can stand and, um, and, um, be acknowledged.
Come on.
That's all I have today, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbow.
What is Sabina's title again?
Neighborhood Sir, uh, Neighborhood Services, uh, Manager. She'll, uh, the Department of Neighborhood Services. Basically, she will be, uh, working a lot with, with the community development, um, economic development and just with, within our neighborhoods. So we're excited for that and, uh, a lot of good things coming.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Actually, Director, I, I said manager, but it's Director, my apologies.
Thank you.
It's a Director. It's Neighborhood Services Director. Um, basically, um, the, s, some of her existing duties in economic development will remain. Some of those, um, have been, uh, between Lex, Mary and myself, uh, are being done, but also her role, important role with CDVG, working with the community, uh, as a community resource, um, and, uh, Community Development Block Grants and just, um, overall improvements, uh, in the neighborhoods.
Congratulations, Sabina.
Congratulations. So I say, is there a, someone make a motion to adjourn? Councilman Bolts made the motion and Councilwoman Gregory seconded the motion. All in favor? It's unanimous, the motion is passed. Thank you all.